Yeah, as far as I know. Here we go. All right, well, I approve the minutes of last meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Everybody approves. Okey-dokey. We'll move on to application number ZV4534. Located at 234 Myrtle Street. Consider it's considered a very a request for a variance to Glen County zoning ordinance, section 705, to allow for an encroachment and setbacks for a new balcony on one unit of a two-family residence. And to allow more than 50% site coverage. Property is owned RR Resort Residential and is located at 234 Myrtle Street, St. Simon's Island, parcel ID 0403921. Velma Reed, owner and applicant. So I'd like to hear from staff.
Eli, planning and zoning. As you said, this is ZV4534, located at 234 Myrtle Street. It is one unit out of a two-family dwelling for an encroachment and two setbacks for a new balcony and staircase. So the background of the project is, the applicant is requesting a variance for a balcony and stairs to be built to be seven feet from the property line. The lot size is .16 acres, just around 6,900 square feet. This lot was originally permitted with a 10-foot setback along Myrtle and a 10-foot setback along Postel at the time of construction in 2006. Today, the structure would have different variances, which is why the language is worded as the setback to the property line, not what we define the setback as today. The site currently has a 54% site coverage. Resort Residential has a 50% site coverage regulation. This addition would cause the site to end up at 58%. At the time of construction in 2006, the 50% site coverage was not a requirement. That was amended to Resort Residential in 2009, roughly three to three and a half years after the project was finished. Staff has previously spoken to the architect about what work would require a variance and the degree to which something might encroach. At that time, staff advised the architect that doing a repair and replace on the existing balconies to existing footprint would not require a variance. The stairs shown in the elevation were not part of the discussion at that time. Here is just a table showing setbacks, where these setbacks were originally, how the structure was originally permitted, basically what the setbacks are proposed now, and for the encroachment into the setbacks that were shown on the original permit in 2006. And here is the site plan, showing the addition on the right-hand side along Postel or Railroad Avenue, with the balconies, the staircase on the bottom floor within the exit, that footprint of the balconies, and a terrace. The terrace is not part of the variance discussion today.
Oh, go ahead.
Here is just a close-up of that. Today, this lot would have a 20-foot setback on this side with the orientation that the previous setbacks had, where a 10-foot setback is a corner lot. But that shouldn't have an effect today as we are presenting you the variance according to the permitted setbacks from the 2006 permit. Here are your elevations from both the, the left-hand elevation is from the Postel side. The side elevation shown on the right is from the Myrtle Street side. And then here are three pictures I have taken of the property. The one on the left being from the Postel side, the one in the middle being from Myrtle, and the one on the right being in the middle of the structure where it appears that the balconies there would match the proposed balconies to be added. And here are your possible motions.
Okay, any questions for staff? I got one or two.
Just, and I'm not sure if you can ask it, but maybe a question for the owner. There's a, in the pictures, and when I looked at it, there's a fire hydrant that looks to be roughly where the property line is. You see in the middle picture to the right of the trash can. Has that been considered, or because if this happens, if you're coming, you know, six feet or so out, that's going to put the hydrant awful close to the house. Is the fire department okay with that location?
The fire department has not reviewed this variance, as that was not taken into account.
Okay.
I got a question. How far, do you know how far this addition goes out beyond the existing balconies?
That is a question I can put, Kevin, would you mind answering that one?
Oh, you don't know that?
Question better answered by the architect.
Oh, okay, well, I can wait and answer when, when we get his.
Okay.
When we get to his part. Okay. And when you said the, the way the setbacks were when it was originally built? I assumed that Postel was a secondary street, and since it fronts on Myrtle?
It appears that originally this lot was permitted with a, with their front setback along Beachview. Today, that would be permitted with a 20-foot front setback from Myrtle Street, as that's where their access is from.
Right.
But it appears from the survey and the information we found on the original permitting cards, that Beachview was considered their front setback, and that's where their 20-foot would be located. If that was done today, this would be a double frontage lot with a 20-foot setback along Postel and Beachview.
Postel, and so the front of the, where you enter would be the side street?
If, with, with these setbacks, with their design, we would have different setbacks today. It is why my presentation, I did have to mention it, but we are considering this variance more towards what the structure was permitted with, as that is what the, that is how the structure was built to, those are the standards it was built to by a previous planner and building department. And that's why the language has been specifically tailored to the property line and not to a specific setback.
Okay. Anybody, any more questions for staff? Okay, thank you, sir. So we hear from the applicant. She tapped to the microphone and give us your name and all.
Good morning, my name is Kevin Higgins, I'm an architect. The owner, Mrs. Reed, is also here, if you have any questions for her. Regarding your question, the, it's our intent just to limit the addition that we're talking about doing to the size of the balconies presently. Not encroaching any further.
And that's, the note indicated here in the top right, it just indicates, and the balcony repairs and construction limits to match existing, that's what you're saying, is that any new will not go beyond that?
Yes. And if, if I may say, the, this has been, these are cantilevered, the original balconies are cantilevered balconies, and this has been an ongoing issue for apparently years, according to the, the owner. And it's been repaired and repaired and repaired, kind of band-aided. And a contractor has recently kind of exposed the structure, and there's, there's rot all the way into the, the cantilevered members. So what the owner's trying to do is just remedy this once and for all, and just, you know, forego the cantilevering and just do a independently secured balconies with a roof and just try to take care of this problem once and for all.
What are the, what is the protrusion of the existing porches now?
It's probably about four feet, four and a half feet. I was kind of afraid to walk on them.
Because looking at, at the drawing that was submitted, Eli, can we go to the next slide, please? Oh, sorry, one more. Yeah, that one, there's one that has a scale on it that we printed out that shows the entire roof, but anyway. Yeah, was it the wall section? Yeah, there's one that shows basically from that side elevation scaled out, that, that shows at about six feet or so. And it also shows that on the, I guess, the north side of the building, there's a slight bump out, kind of rounded bay window, and it shows the porches going in front of that. You know, riding by and looking at it, and even looking at the existing drawings, that bump out looks like it's only, if it's over two feet, two inches, then it itself is already encroaching.
Right, yes.
So it appears by this drawing that we're going to be well beyond our existing limits.
Well, and, and we'll, there again, that was an estimation, but we'll limit, limit that, you know, this to the, the existing extent of the, of the balconies. That's the intent.
So if, I guess, then my next question is, if this new proposed balcony is going to go full width, then you're going to have to come beyond that to get past that rounded bump out that is existing, correct?
I think that, that rounded part only comes out maybe a foot and a half, like you said, maybe, maybe two feet. I mean, it's just, it's just for aesthetics is going around that.
Maybe the picture shows it better.
Yeah, actually, if we can back up, there was one that actually shows, well, yeah, actually you can see it there.
Those balconies only stick out, they stick out four and a half feet, you say? It looks like about three.
Maybe, do, can you?
You, I'll probably step up here to the podium and give us your name and all.
My name is Velma Reed, and the existing balconies go out about four feet and five inches.
Okay.
And the bay window doesn't come out that far now.
Right, I can see that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Well, if, we're not going any further than the, than what's already there, I don't understand why we even have to have a variance.
The variance is because the actual foot, while it's not extending any further, you are adding more footprint within the setback itself.
Oh, that's where the 58% comes in?
That part as well, but the fact that the, the current balconies are constrained to the windows, that they're round, that they don't extend from one side to the other. It's because the, is it more?
Okay, we're increasing, so it didn't, it's, and it's a, it's already in frack, it already sticks into the setbacks, what you're saying?
It's extending further into the setbacks, maybe not closer to the property line, but now you have more structure within that area, because side to side, that area is encroaching as well.
Oh. So it's just a bigger area, wider area?
Yes.
So the, if those porches are sticking out four foot, five inches, then they're, they're in two and a half feet already into the setback, correct?
Potentially, yes.
Because the setback is a vertical line?
Yes.
So site coverage, if it doesn't go to the ground, does not include in the site coverage?
Site coverage takes the footprint from, you know, a bird's eye view.
So the balconies wouldn't be included, that's it?
They would, they would count.
Okay.
Do you have any record of a previous application for variance for those existing porches that are into the setbacks now, or was there one?
Not that staff has found.
Okay.
I can, I can address, the, the additional site coverage also included, you know, that little terrace area that they, that the owner wanted, kind of on the ground level, so that, that's included in that site coverage, so that's, that's a lot of that 58%.
But the terrace is within the roof structure?
Well, the added terrace, that, that kind of curved terrace that would be on ground level, that's just pavers or, or concrete, depending on what, we haven't gotten that far, but that, that's included in that site coverage, so that's, and, and we would, you know, we were planning on actually paving underneath the, the, the new porches, if you were, so that, that, that's why the site coverage went up.
So that terrace, it sticks, that terrace that sticks out, that's not existing?
Correct.
I didn't think so. So it's, is that the property line I'm looking at, it's right up against?
Yes.
But that looks like more than a, how much?
Mr. Chairman, the terrace, as it is a flat surface on grade, does not require, it's not required to meet building setbacks, so that would not be included as part of the variance, but it would be included as part of the site coverage. It would not be part of the setback variance, it would be part of the site coverage.
Okay.
I would like to ask, maybe you can answer the question, or the applicant, with the existing porches, was there an application made, or were they just built to the existing? Do you know that question, or?
That was before my time, do you know?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there again, they're cantilevered in, so that it had to be at the time of construction.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
So I have a question. Kevin, do you know how close that fire hydrant is going to be to those column, to that other, to the column that's going to be out there? If, if we allow this?
I don't specifically, unless, do you have any idea? Oh, I can go out there and measure it, but I, I don't know specifically.
I mean, that's my only concern, you know, fire departments probably ought to be included in, in this process, I would think. I mean, I don't know how much trouble it's going to be to move that hydrant, or is, is that hydrant on the, on the property? I would think it is.
Yeah, it's an odd, odd location, but maybe you can address that.
The hydrant was just put in, just this year, for the building that they built across the street, and it is at least four or five, maybe six feet from that post on the end.
From the new post?
From the new post, yes, yeah.
Who, who ordered that fire hydrant? I mean, that's on, that's on your property, correct?
It is, the, it was ordered by the new building that was built across the street.
To put it on your property?
Yes.
Is that on your actual property, or is it in the right of way? It's gotta be.
Yeah, it's kind of in the right of way, but it's right on us, on the line.
But it would be beyond your property line, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, it very well could be beyond, on our property.
I would think it'd be in the right of way.
Come to the podium, please, sir.
Give your name and let us know what's going on.
My name's Stacy Culberth, I'm the Assistant County Engineer, I'm actually a neighbor here, here as well, so the fire hydrant is on the right-of-way side of the property line. So they say it's just, there's about 20, 20 feet of grass is considered right-of-way for a
Sure, it's not actually, it's not actually on the property?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Okay, all right. That makes sense.
Okey doke. Well, I guess we've had the captain's, if any, questions. Anybody here for or against this application? Let the record show, nobody here for or against. Okay. Well.
Eli, do you have a copy of the proposed, because I saw a floor plan and it, the floor plan I saw demonstrated the new porches to be about six foot wide. Do you, did I see something wrong? Do we have a footprint of the proposed drawings? Because when I printed it, I don't have a 24 by 36 printer, so I did not get it on my...
We do, we do have a digital copy of those plans. We don't, we do not yet have a building permit, but we were submitted elevations in the site plan as part of the variance package. So I can supply you with electronic copy, but unfortunately I cannot at this meeting.
As far as the dimensions, I think I just put a note on floor plans and wall sections to, to not encroach further than existing balconies, but, you know, once we go into permitting, I can get a hard measurement on that, whether it's four foot, five or whichever, and actually put that on the plans.
So nothing's going to protect beyond the existing balcony?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, he can't, on his phone.
Okay.
Stand by, Mr. Chairman.
Say what?
Stand by a second. Richard's looking at an enlarged drawing via cellphone.
He has my full support.
There is no dimension on this.
But it knows it covers it.
Get the man's phone back.
Okay. All right, what do y'all think? I'm ready to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions as long as we do not increase the existing footprint as it is.
Make it simple for her.
Okay. Approval conditions to not exceed the footprint, and we do know you're going to need to do ground supports to, to support the existed, the structure, be basically a freestanding I would, I would make a motion to approve it with those conditions, not to exceed the existing footprint.
Maybe you need to say the existing, the existing extension.
Protrusion.
Yeah, because I don't think they're on the ground.
Okay. Excuse my verbiage. We want, we want to exceed the existing protrusion.
The cantilever.
Of the cantilever, yes.
Yeah. I got a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those not in favor? Let the record stand, they got their variance. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okey doke. This is yours. All right, now, apparently we got, we got some additional business to elect officers. Does anybody have any thoughts on the matter?
So I nominate AJ as chairman for 2021.
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And vice chairman?
You want to do it?
Yeah, I'll do it.
I'll nominate Edie Wildsmith for vice chair.
Can I have a second? We have a second. Edie be vice chair, we need Janet, the Secretary of Treasure, right? So we don't have to...
Or recorder.
Well, we go ahead, let's go ahead and nominate her too.
I'll nominate Janet Levin for Recording Secretary for 2021.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okey doke. Election of members is over. Right?
Make sure.
Adhere to me.